All right. It's good evening, one and all. We'll call this meeting open. We're into announcements at present, as far as announcements go. All right. Firstly, I'd like to adopt the agenda. Moved by Councilor Zant, seconded by Councilor Chouagnier. All those in favour, carried. Announcements. Friday, I was invited to attend a meeting. It's by invitation only, involving all mayors in the Ottawa area, as well as Ottawa, with regard to flooding. The province has invited us. We'll see what's going on. I have no idea as to what they're going to announce. Will they be giving us something? We don't know. And on the 27th, next Monday, we'll be attending a meeting to inform people with regard to the new flooding developments. Centre Aide, the Red Cross will be there. All departments will be in attendance to help individuals out if individuals need help. That's going to be next week. And the Governor General is visiting us on the 30th in the morning. She'll be attending the Town Hall for about 20 minutes. She'll be entering into a discussion with myself. We'll be making a visit at the Canadian Hockey Arena, as well as the church. Mr. Lallon is the author behind all of this, so we have a hard time following him up or keeping up with him because the Governor General is as quick-acting as Mr. Lallon is. It should be very interesting. Any other announcements? Yes? Yes, go ahead. Tomorrow? Well, tomorrow, we'll be inaugurating the opening of a park, subject to financing from the federal government. That's going to be in Hammond, of course. This is a complete access park for handicapped individuals. It's a park that's called the Saint-François without any borders. People from Hammond worked hard in obtaining the necessary funding for this. Go ahead, Mr. Bouchard. Do you have anything else to add? No? That's fine. Well, I have nothing else to say. Fine. If someone wants to attend tomorrow, let him or her do so. Tomorrow also, we'll be proceeding with the first shovel full of dirt dug out of the new Morris Park venue that's going to be commemorated next week. The park will be named Alain Potvin. The Alain Potvin Park, located at the corner of Dr. Carbay and Saint-Jean. The family wishes to build a structure in the lagoon that's there at no cost whatsoever to the town. It's going to be very interesting. I believe that's all. If anyone else has any other announcements, I'll leave it up to you. That's fine then. Let's go on now to question period. If anyone has any questions of council, step up to the mic and give your name and your address, please.
My name is Roland LaBonté. What's your address? 1573 Rollin Road. I represent my daughter in this issue. The contractor that set foot on my daughter's property, did he have a permit to work within the city of Clarence and Rockland? Because you need a permit to work within the city of Clarence and Rockland, Mr. Bedard?
Well, I believe that a contractor does not need a permit per se. Those are contracts that are awarded to the best... Well, I believe that you needed to have a permit in hand to perform work in the city of Rockland. Well, we don't have any permits. Well, with regard to contractors, we might need, require a permit, not perform work, not to perform work per se, but to secure rights on a street on which the work is performed. Has a contractor been hired by the city of Clarence and Rockland? Well, what we have hired were general contractors in the past. They might work through subcontractors if the work needs to be done that way. I'm not sure exactly whom this gentleman is referring to. Well, the one that worked in the Rollin Road ditch. You're up to $250,000 worth of contracts that's already been paid out. Well, the onus is upon him if this contractor brings along a subcontractor or not. That's what I want to know. If that was given to a Rockland-based or Vankleyville-based contractor. I believe we went out to tender. We followed the necessary procedures laid out for us. This is the law. It's against the law, really, to grant it to one individual in particular. I understand it's an open contract situation, but he came in with a subcontractor. We don't care as long as the work's done, that's fine. And yesterday, I went by, and he did some good work. There's only a bit of work, a bit of water at the end of the ditch, but the weeping tile is now underneath. Well, there's a lot of water this year. No, it's not because there's a lot of water. It's because that drain doesn't drain properly. It goes in a slope and then goes upward again. Why is it that you're always telling me to hire a lawyer? Even then, when we stopped the meeting, you came to see me and to discuss things. I have another question. Why am I told that I'll never win? Winning what? I never told you that you wouldn't win. Well, good. You've told me, Gee, you've told me that twice in the past, that you'll never win. I'll never win what? Look, there's a letter that was sent to our insurance folks. Correct me if I'm mistaken, Mrs. Wellet. What Mrs. Wellet told me the last time around? That to get to her office the next day in Rockland, she wasn't there. I asked to meet with her. She spoke to me over the phone. Why won't people sit down with me, lay down the cards as they should be laid down, and speak to me? Well, she conducted a phone interview with you, the same as she would in person, and she would have, she would have helped you out. No, she did not help me out at all. And you need my daughter's signature. I'm the one representing her. Well, why is it that I'm told to always phone a lawyer? When somebody causes damage on your property, do you phone the lawyer or do you phone the police officers? The police officers. Well, am I told to head left instead of heading right? Well, you're old enough to know what to do. Well, fine. I think I'll open up an investigation as far as that goes. Well, that's fine. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you then, folks. Fine. Do we have anything else? Does anyone else have any questions? Does anyone that does not understand French? Does everyone understand French here tonight? Yes, that's fine. Let's go on then to council members' items. Item number nine. Mario Zant. Whereas council was approached by owners from the urban zone that wishes to keep henhouses in their yards, be it resolved that the town administration be, prepare a report that will give rise to a process that will allow henhouses within Clarence and Rockland? No, no. Somebody's clapping. Somebody should not. Fine. I'll second this. Any questions? Mr. Levert. We're requiring a hefty report to give a green light for individuals, to grant the individuals the right to warehouse three hens. Other municipalities give the same approval. It seems to me that we're going to be losing a lot of time and have the department waste a lot of time to look into the matter of keeping two or three or four hens. Because the day in which we don't obtain a report where parameters are not exactly eliminated, that's when people are going to say, why are there no parameters? We're just protecting ourselves. We're saying, here are what other municipalities are doing. Here are what other bylaws that need to be respected. Here is what our bylaw officers base themselves upon to issue either a ticket or come up with a decision on a certain issue. I think that it's okay as far as rural environment goes. There's no problem. When you're, you set foot in Morris Village and houses are built close by one side the other, and individual fails to clean up the henhouse, there's a lot of smell that comes out from it. Now, I don't approve this motion. I just bring it to council's attention tonight because a resident told me to do so. It was just to help us take an enlightened decision. Well, that's fine. If we could eliminate red tape, then we could or we can. It's worth to do things properly and to determine, you know, what would the conditions be that would compel us to green light this particular issue or not? If there's a complaint, we can then determine what is justified and what is not. What are delays involved or not? It's not just a matter of saying, yes, you have a right to keep hens or no, you don't have the right to keep hens. I'd like to have a very enlightened set of facts in order to take a proper decision. Mrs. Chouagnier? That's right. It's nice to have a bylaw, and here are the consequences with regard to that bylaw if we adopt a bylaw. The fact that people say, well, if we allow three, we won't have three, and they undertake to only keep or warehouse three hens, at that time, we know who warehouses hens where. And if a municipality keeps a call, receives a call saying, well, somebody's keeping a henhouse, I mean, a veritable hen factory, 1,000 hens or more, then we'll know what to do. Mrs. Caldarelli?
I think we ought to proceed with that because, but of course, it's not a priority as compared to other things that can be tackled at department level. But, you know, these citizens that came forward to ask me that it be brought to town council's attention, well, that represents a priority in their eyes. You see what I mean? We've also been waiting for a long time now to implement a parking bylaw. Parking bylaw is much more important than bylaw with regards to keeping hens. I know, but that means that we won't, it doesn't necessarily mean that we'll come up with a report next week. Of course, if people buy three hens and then three roosters, sooner or later, you're going to have a whole slew of complaints. All those in favour of commissioning a report? Yes. Let's go on now to consent items. Does anyone have any items to take out from the list? Mr. Levert, could you please read to us the consent items that are listed before us today? Be it resolved, Mr. Mayor? My, my. It seems that the list is longer than usual. Be it resolved that the following items deemed as consent items under the consent items section be adopted. 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings, regular meeting of April the 15th, committee of the hall meeting, April the 15th, special meeting April the 24th, and special meeting May 10th, 2019. Receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Accessibility Advisory Committee of February the 5th, 2019. Library Board Meeting of April the 16th, 2019. 10.3, the following recommendations from Committee of the Hall of April the 15th, 2019. Resolution to protect the Ottawa River. B, resolution to support the municipality of Gray Highlands regarding the potential reduction and/or loss of the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund allotment. And C, resolution to adopt the proposed amendment to policy LOI 2014-01, non-profit organisations. Item 10.4, yes? I'm sorry? That's fine? You're doing fine here. 10.5, resolution to appoint a member to the Accessibility Advisory Committee. 10.5, resolution to adopt the salaries paid from March the 24th, 2019 to May the 4th, 2019, in the gross amount of $834,478.99 and net amount of $576,189.58. Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Simar. All those in favour, carried then. Thank you. Let's go on now to item 11, committee and staff reports. Mr. Bouchard? I move that report number FIN 2019-019 be received as information. Seconded by Councilor Caldarelli. Any questions? All those in favour? Carried? Well, I have a question. Why was the WSIB not budgeted as in previous years? Well, I believe a report was forwarded to council before I was hired. It was last year's report and explains the difference in between Schedule 1 WSIB constraints and Schedule 2 WSIB constraints. Beforehand, we were regulated by Schedule 2, and we received complaints with regards to that. I won't go into details as far as that goes, but I'll send you with the report as to that and explains the difference and why it was not budgeted. But what I'd like to mention is that in 2019, that amount is now budgeted, and we won't have that particular dilemma in the next few years. All right? Any other questions then? All those in favour, carried then. Thank you. 11.2, financial statements. Councilor Zant? I just, Councilor Caldarelli? Resolution? Well, there's 11.2, financial statements. There's Sub A, there's the presentation, and Sub B deals with the adoption of the financial statements. So, Mr. Denoye, go ahead.
Well, you have, before you do the presentation of the financial statements? Good evening. I imagine that you took a look at the reports, and if you have any questions, I'll go to any sections of the report that you have. I'll go ahead with the French version of the report. If you have any English questions, that's fine. So, we completed our audit in March and April, and we obtained great cooperation from department heads. It went smoothly. So, if we take a look at page two of the report, this is a recap of where we're at. We completed the financial audit. What's remaining is to adopt the financial, the final financial statements of the council to proceed with the final updates and obtain letters of intent from the direction. We'd mentioned in our planning letter that you received in March that we'd make use of 2% of the income. This is what we took. $850,000 is our threshold. What this threshold represents is this. We use this as a basis when we perform our tests. We have our performance ratio, and we have our threshold amount, and we make use of both amounts to determine whether something is deemed advisable or not. If there's, if there's a 75% success ratio, that's fine. We may make use of 5% of this $800,000 threshold, approximately $30,000 amount, which means whatever mistake we encounter, be it corrected or not corrected, we bring it to the council's attention. So, we also had identified significant mistakes. We have to, we have to identify significant risks, those elements in which we put a bit more emphasis in our work. There's also contaminated sites that are in contention, potential suits, that's normal with all municipalities, as well as the failure to respect certain causes of certain contracts. Those are potential risks that we've identified, not just for your municipality, but for all municipalities. Page five and six with regard to those points I've raised. Well, we've performed work on those discrepancies I've alluded to. We have to ensure that journal entries are done properly. We've sent notices of taxes yet to be paid. And we are in agreement also that there are no registered liabilities with regards to the township of Clarence and Rockland. Each and every year also, we send letters off to individual lawyers to see if there are any suits pending, and there is nothing irregular. Two, mentioned with regard to that, so we have no particular incidents to bring to your attention. Which brings me to page seven, internal control mechanisms. An audit is not a look at internal control mechanisms. We take a look at internal control mechanisms. We perform a walkthrough of those mechanisms. We test those mechanisms for certain income streams with regards to expenditures, and we don't have any significant elements to note. We have variances that we've noted, but nothing that gives rise to any type of alarm. Page eight is a bit mundane. There's nothing to note there. Appendix A, and that's what I mentioned, those discrepancies that are adjusted and non-adjusted. The discrepancies that are non-adjusted are those that we tested for amortisation with regard to certain items that relate to roadways. There's a small $13,000 amount that was perceived, but we have to extrapolate it, founded on the total amount of population here in Clarence and Rockland, which was near to nothing. So, the next page are those journal entries that were approved of during the course of the audit. Most of those journal entries stem from administration or reclassification work that needs to be performed, but that doesn't fall under the income provisions, so it doesn't concern us directly at present, even though it's included in Appendix 3. Appendix C also deals with accounted resources. There might be some resources that'd be of interest to you. We had some webinars available to our clients. Often, we proceed to presentations to people here in Rockland. If you're interested as members of council, we can add you to our distribution list, and you can be invited to attend our events. Now, if you have any questions to the audit per se before we get into financial audits and to the financial statements? No questions? No. If you take a look at the financial statements, so the first page, we'll read it. It's page two, the responsibility of department heads with regards to financial statements. Those are not those statements that are issued by BDO, but by what town administration prepares. Now, pages 3, 2, 5 represents the auditor's report. As opposed to last year, the format has changed, and the standards with regards to audit have changed as of the 15th of December 2018. Our opinion, instead of being included at the end of the first page, is now included in the very final paragraph. It's an unreserved opinion. It's a positive opinion in keeping with the Canadian accounting standards dealing with public institutions. And we put in a bit more information as to the responsibility of the auditor, the governance, the governing body, and department heads. Page five now, supposing you, if you were to approve the financial statements tonight, I will be in a position to sign on behalf of BDO Canada, if that ever is the case. Any questions? None then. That's fine. I'll take a look at financial statements. So, consolidated financial statements. Now, on page six, your assets that are convertible in cash, $28.8 million. There's a difference as opposed to last year. It's a temporary placement, the GIC, $5 million GIC that was acquired during the course of the year. Other than apart from that, things are similar. Page six, $15.4 million. Those are amounts from revenue stemming from last year's that were accounted for this year. And then we have those assets that are not cash transferable. The largest are corporal assets for an accumulation of $134 million. That is reflected in note number 12 of our statement of notices or notes. This has not been spent, but it's in excess. It's viewed upon as a surplus. Page seven details the consolidated statement of amounts, $39.7 million. The majority stems from taxes, $19.5 million. An increase as opposed to last year represents the increase in the tax roll. And then we have charges of $139.2 million. The miscellaneous section are those income that are linked to corporal immobilisations. These are not corporate holdings. That's why it's easier to, you know, separate apples from oranges. So, we're talking here about $4.2 million. Now, the debt variables to consolidate the net debt at the end of 2017 and 2018 and consolidate what was in cash from 2017 as opposed to 2018. And then we've, we deal now with accounting methods. There has been no change this part about to accounting methods. Seven, some exceptions. For example, if there were transactions conducted outside the normal course of events, either with individual members of council or town administration, we would have to note that, but there were no incidences as far as that goes of that particular nature. The rest of the notes represent additional information on those figures that appear on the statement. Any questions? Fine then. Fine. Well, thank you very much, ma'am. Yes? Be it resolved that town council adopts the Clarence and Rockland financial statements as prepared by BDO Canada for the fiscal year ending the 31st of December 2018 as recommended? Councilor Levert? Seconded, all those in favour, carried then. Thank you. Let's go on now to item 11.3, accounts paid. Councilor Caldarelli? Be it resolved that the accounts paid for the period from the 18th of April 2019 to the 12th of May 2019 in the amount of $3,193,092.57 be adopted as recommended? Seconded by Councilor Zant. Any questions? All those in favour? Carried then. Item 11.4, proposed new hall rental policy, online reservation. Whereas the current community hall rental policy needs to be updated and reflect the future online booking system, be it resolved that the committee of, that council recommends and adopts policy LOI 2019-01 being the policy for establishing the guidelines for managing municipal community hall rentals effective June the 1st, 2019, repealing policy LOI 198-02, and that the committee of the hall further recommends that council adopt a bylaw to represent Schedule J of the user fee bylaw 2019-16 with the amended Schedule J showing the revised rental rates for community halls as attached to report LOI 2019-04-05. Seconded by Councilor Bouchard. Any questions? All those in favour? That's fine. Let's go on now to Morris Village Park, contractor wire for the project management. Councilor Bouchard? Mr. Mayor? Whereas ATRL Engineering has designed all the plans and specifications for the construction of the Morris Village Park, and that this firm is therefore well-versed to supervise the work. Be it resolved that the town council recommends that municipal council adopt a bylaw to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign a contract with Hogsbury Transport and Excavation Incorporated in order to execute the construction works for Morris Village Park for an amount of $599,146 excluding HST as recommended in report LOI 2019-04-03. Seconded by Councilor Lallon. All those in favour? Carried then. Award of an inspection contract for ATRL? Mr. Caldarelli? Whereas, Mr. Mayor, a contract for the design and preparation of the tender drawings and documents has been previously awarded to ATRL Engineering in June 2019 as per report INF 2018-007. Be it resolved that the committee of the hall, or should I say that this particular committee here recommends that council approves that the infrastructure and planning department deviates from the current procurement policy to sole source the site inspection and contract administration to ATRL Engineering for the Garo and Puyott Streets water main replacement projects for the amount of $96,000 excluding HST. Thank you. Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Simard? Questions? All those in favor? Carry then? Bylaws? Are there any bylaws you'd wish to withdraw from the rest of the bylaws? Councilor Simard, could you please read to us the bylaws? Be it resolved that the following bylaws be adopted? 12.1, Bylaw 2019-49, Dedication of a Public Highway, Clark Road Part II on Plan 50R-10739. Item 12.2, Bylaw 2019-55, to authorize the use of funds from the Maintenance and Reconstruction of Roads Reserve Fund to finance the conversion of hard surface back to gravel. Item 12.3, Bylaw 2019-56, to appoint Councilor Samuel Cardarelli as a member to the Public Library Board. Item 12.4, Bylaw 2019-57, to authorize the signature of an agreement with MTO-ARIS. Item 12.5, Bylaw 2019-58, naming of the park located in Morris Village Park Allain-Paudvin Park. All those in favor? Yes? Seconded by Councilor Levert? Fine, all those in favor? That's fine. I just like... I just have a question, maybe not a question, but a comment. Now, in the case in which we'll be converting a hard surface back to gravel, are we sending a letter to those residents on that road to advise them of such? Well, as things stand right now, so well, the short answer to that is yes, we shall do so. But we're now in the process of identifying who the contractor will be to perform that work. Now, once we have all of the elements in place to send out a letter with the... containing the proper details, we'll send it off to residents. Confirmatory bylaw? Be it resolved that Bylaw 2019-48 be deemed as a confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of town councils? Seconded by Councilor Cardarelli? Adjournment called at 7:45 PM?